This is Monument, I'm big. Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's Sewer Commission meeting, September 5th, 2018. First item on the agenda is roll call, everybody's here, public comments. Seeing and hearing none, the next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes, August 15th, 2018, regular session.
Still move.
Second. Motion is second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Next item is August 15th, 2018, executive session. So move.
Second.
Second motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I was not here, so abstain.
Abstain. Okay, next item is August 30th.
Oh, maybe I was. I was here, sorry. I made a mistake, sorry.
August 30th, 2018, regular session.
Still move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
First, that was the one I was not at.
And abstain, and anybody opposed?
Sorry.
No. Okay, next item is 7:05, public hearing. Someone could give the notice.
Public notice is hereby given in conformity with the requirement of general bylaw of Town of West Boyles in Article 23, the public hearing and the notice that the Board of Selectmen will meet on Wednesday, September 5th, 2018, at 7:05 PM for the purpose of considering amending their fees schedule to include permitting fees of $1.25 per day to be charged to production companies for the filming within the town. The meeting will be held in the meeting room 210 at the Town Hall on 40 Worcester Street, West Boyles.
Okay. Anita, what do you have to add to this?
Sure, so you remember at an earlier meeting we had talked about the proposed advertising, so to speak, of the town within the Mass Film Office to encourage filming companies to consider our community for filming movies, commercials, et cetera. And at that time I had provided you the guidelines and the permit application which you all thought was good and moved ahead with. The question was that we had in the guidelines and the permit process, it requires a $25 per day fee that gets charged to the production company for each day that they are working within the community. Not on the fee schedule would also be the fact that the town would be charging them for any expenses associated with police, fire, or DPW-related details, et cetera, for that work. But for tonight's purposes, we're looking at adding this $25 per day fee to the selectmen's fee schedule.
Anybody have any questions or concerns about it?
We already had this discussion, I think it's a no-brainer to adopt it.
Anybody from the public have any questions or concerns? Can you step up and identify yourself? Yep?
Raj Shumayi, 125 Lee Street. It's just a simple question as to the $25. Is intent to have tax revenue? And why then wouldn't it be higher? What's the exact intent?
The intent of the fee is to help cover some of the administrative costs of oversight of the filming company while they're in town. You know, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that needs to happen in terms of coordination with DPW, police, fire, et cetera. So actually, the $25 fee per day would probably not even cover all the actual expenses incurred by the town. And by statute, we have to set fees that are meant to, you know, to some degree cover the cost of providing that service. So it's not meant to be a revenue source as much as it is to try to recoup some of the cost of the time put into the process.
So having said that, wouldn't it make sense to make it more like $50 or $75?
We did a search of what other communities are charging, and $25 seems to be the range that's out there. We didn't want to discourage companies from...
Companies?
Yeah.
And have companies been filming in town? Is this a known...
No, there's been nothing recently, no.
But even though there were no fees prior to this, there was still no incentive for them to come to town?
Correct. But also, neither were we listed on the Mass Film Registry. So this is going to be a much more formal notice to any filming companies of the benefits that we have to offer.
Okay, thank you. But I think in regards to what this gentleman says, I mean, I think if a movie comes and says, "This is the town we need," $25, $50, or $100 is not going to make a break.
Make a break for them.
For them. They're gonna, I mean, so I think the fee is just to get the permit. I mean, it's gonna be all kinds of costs on top. There's probably gonna be police details.
Which they would be paying for.
Of course, all and above. So, I mean, I had some of the same concerns. $25 seems like nothing to a million, you know, if it's a multimillion-dollar movie. I don't think the $25 fee is gonna...
That won't break the bank, I'm sure, nor the budget.
That's why I kind of, you know, say, "Why isn't it more?" But I guess, I mean...
The idea is to try to attract movie companies, production companies, to come to town because of all the peripheral benefits that all of the, you know, well, one, you know, our town could be featured in a movie; two, that all the business owners in town, these people are gonna go all eat lunch, and it's a boon to the town. So I, we don't want to hammer them over the head and say, "It's $500 a day, and it's just a nominal fee." Really, that's what everybody else does, and it's really, the whole purpose is to get this on the state's website so that they know, okay, those people have the guidelines, what do they have to offer?
So it's more for marketing purposes?
Yes. That's my take on it. I mean, I don't...
The $25 a day?
No, just the whole purpose.
Yeah, that's all this is, right. So, I mean, in that case, why is there a fee at all? You know, if our only...
I would not have an issue with having a zero fee in this one. I mean, to me, this isn't about whether the fee is 25 or 50 or $100.
Wouldn't be a fee if we had zero fee.
And also, you know, down the road, if you get so many movies are filming here, we could increase the fee.
And if we find that the $25 fee doesn't cover
Yeah.
what it takes to run, we can look at down the road.
So at this time, you know, we have nothing, so...
Thank you. Thanks very much for your comments. Any other comments? Nothing. A motion to close the public hearing?
Still move. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other discussion from the board, or do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the $25 per day fee for the film, within the film permit guidelines.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. So has the, the guidelines, we've already approved.
Yes, you approved it at your other meeting.
The only thing we had to do is add this.
We just needed to confirm that the fee was added to the schedule properly.
The fee. Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Pat, are you gonna do next?
I'll make a motion to approve the warrants as printed in the agenda, because they're already scratching now.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No. Vernon Jackson, what, you wanna come up and, you got a couple items? Do you know what you have on the agenda? Lee Street and Malden Street Bridge, Lee Street Drainage.
Yeah, I received a proposal from Malone and McBroom for that project, and there were two choices. He could have gone down Lee Street, which was all over 1,000 feet, it was a long, long distance, or go the other way around onto Good Dale, and then there's some newly acquired town land right around the corner from where we, where our drainage wants to be. So he's proposing to go around the corner down to Good Dale and then go off into the woods and do like a drainage swale and just have it dissipate into the ground over there. And the bottom line is, for plans and specs, about 18 grand. And the cost of the project, it's a very loose estimate of around 50. But they don't have, one of the big things would be the geotechnical services of doing the core, the borders, to see what we got for ledge. Because if you notice, there's a lot of ledge around the corner past Holy Cross cropping out, so we don't know if it's extended in that same area. So we're kind of hoping it isn't, but...
It's all ledges.
Yeah, well, it's kind of what we think.
But Good Dale is all ledges.
So, we have to find that out. But the preliminary look at it was 18 grand to do the cheapest way out, and then another 15, that's just for the engineering, and then another 50 grand for the project.
You're looking at about $70,000?
Yeah.
At the best case?
Yeah. I guess the question in my mind is, how bad do we really need it? I mean, I don't know how few guys have had any feedback over this issue. I've got some, it's not a whole lot. Usually, right after it rains, I get a caller too, with those big puddles at the end of Lee Street. I could try to get some grant money. I have that MVP grant coming up, and it's a vulnerability grant. I might be able to try to get something with that. Or the engineering company suggested that that part of Good Dale, past Holy Cross, is very narrow, and there's a lot of trucking traffic coming up through there, and they routinely come over the curb on that inside house, and we've replaced it a couple of times. So we might want to widen that and include this as part of that project, but that's another big step. It would slow it down quite a bit, so...
That seems like a lot of money, and now we said in precedents if somebody else is saying that there's some puddles in their yard, and going forward, to me, that's a lot of money. So if we're doing this one, how many other ones are we gonna end up having to do in town as well?
This is the only one that I know of.
Today?
That would take, yeah, today.
Before this word gets out, if we decide.
Well, these poo puddles have been there for years. And Mr., I don't wanna say his name, but there was a guy that lives on the corner there, and he was getting flooded out there, because it's like a gully. So everything catches in these two puddles, and eventually they overflow into a resident's driveway and downfloods his garage. So he had put some of his own drainage in it at some point, but we've seen the rain we've gotten lately in the last couple of years, we've got some really, really bad rainstorms, and it actually floods into his garage. So we put up some higher burms along there to keep the water in the road, so essentially making the problem worse. It's better for him, he's not being flooded now, so he's good, but we have more water in the roadway now. But it's not overly a huge problem. It was like this the last two years, and, you know, we handled it all winter, you know, we use a lot of salt. It hasn't been an issue. It lingers for a couple of days and then evaporates, and then as long as you don't get any precipitation, it's no problem. So it's just a matter of, you know, do you want to tackle it for 68 grand, or...
Is it causing issues to the roadway itself, you know, undermining the roadway? I mean, let's assume that the abutters good, and he's fixed. Besides the possibility of, you know, becoming ice, is it damaging the road?
Yeah, it's not good for the road. I mean, you have all that water sitting there, and then it freezes, and then you get, it's breaking up somewhat there. So eventually, we may have to redo the whole section, so maybe we should just hold off a little bit until we pulverize, pave, and do the drainage all at once in that area.
Has...
Not a big area, no, it's just a...
The, I don't pay that much attention, I know it's not bumpy, like some of the roads were, like Newton Street was.
No, it's not.
How is that, what's the life expectancy of the rest of that, the road in that area?
It's hard to say, but I say, you've got at least a couple of years. It's not even on the list of bad roads on the pavement management plan. It would just be that one little section that would be bad. The rest of the road's not in that bad a shape. It's because of the puddles and, you know, obviously. It's more of a nuisance to the motorists than anything. You have to slow down for the puddles for a couple of days or a day until they evaporate.
I have seen that flooding over there. That's a lot of water. If it rains, there is a lot of water. And it's on the Lee Street, on the corner of Lee and Good Dale, you know, so much water. When you drive through that Lee Street, it's kind of a hydro, whatever the thing is. So the cars are, you know, it's bad for the road, bad, it's a bad, yeah. Not only for the house owner, the coroner house, his lawn is like flooded with water. So it needs, something has to be done, but I don't know that $70,000 is the solution.
Well, you could do the engineering now and see where it takes us.
So is there any alternate, why don't you take it down? The Lee Street is kind of going slope, right?
No, it goes up, from there it goes up. That's kind of the problem.
Down.
Then it goes down, but it's a long ways till you catch up to the system. It's a good...
So you have to throw another few catch basins in?
Yeah, probably have to put a couple in between till you get to the last one, or the one that's there, the existing one. I'm not really sure why it wasn't done completely when the road was built, but for some reason it wasn't. There's one like halfway down the hill.
A project like this, I think we should wait till we're ready to do the whole corner there, because it does, eventually it does, the corner's gonna need to be done. So I wouldn't want to spend $50,000 now, spend, redesign it in two years and do it again. It doesn't make any sense.
And there are other areas in that place that you might want to put the catch basins in, because I know there are other sections that need it.
Well, yeah, you could tie it into going down the hill, maybe if you did the road, the whole road, or whenever you do it, but then there's another little issue there, because that all dumps into the stream, and then there's some more groundwater rules you have to go by. So that's kind of why you want to go the other way, dissipate off into the ground rather than just dump into a stream.
But except that location, all of the, down Lee Street, it's fine, right?
Yep.
Yeah. So this is the only one location, you've got a lot of water, whether you have a catch basin or not.
Right, this is the only spot there.
This is the only spot. So all of the, down the Lee Street, you know, it's fine, because it's a down slope. All the water goes down.
Yeah, apparently, it's fine heading down, it's just this one little gully in this one house, two houses, so...
I mean, I just think, you know, I think if it came to us and said, "The road needs to be done, it's gonna be $180,000, $200,000, we're gonna do the whole road and put drainage in at the same time." But if we, I think if we don't do anything about it, that road won't be on our radar for years to come, because we know how long, you know, that road won't be, if you go back to our computer program, it's probably not, "This is the road that has to be done in a couple of years," because that road's in pretty good shape.
Yeah, no, it's not.
Compared to what we've been fixing.
It does get a lot of traffic, and a lot of the calls I get are from out-of-town people.
Right.
But I do get some resident interest.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't know, like I said, that's the only thing I'm concerned about. If we put it off, how many years are we putting it off for?
I just don't think, right now, to spend that kind of money, if we don't have a, I mean, maybe we should do as...
The engineer gives us another...
Engineering...
Yeah, but that time, you know, the money will go up, you know, when you do the engineering now.
Just so you know, we have...
When you want to do the real thing, you know.
We have $186,938 available that's not locked in with any project right now.
So we're gonna spend half of it on this project.
Yeah, we'd end up with $18938.
I don't think...
But if you did, if you did the engineering now, you don't know if that's what you're gonna do, engineering for the whole project, you're just gonna do engineering for that one, what you're talking about now.
Right.
That's that whole corner. That's what I'm talking about doing the engineering for.
Wait and do it, when we're going to do it.
The $189 is including all the money that's earmarked for the roads that we're gonna be doing shortly?
Yeah.
Already taken out?
The $186,9 is what we have left right this second, not including, we already took out the $33 for the Crescent Street engineering, we already took out all the paving money, it's just what's left.
So...
It's not set to go anywhere. And the other issue was, if we do want to widen that road, we might have to talk to Holy Cross about maybe a little land gift, so maybe we should start doing with that, see if they give us, give us that corner, and do get to the point where we want to widen that and do the drainage up in that area. We'd have that going for us.
The thing is, you know, why do we have to make it wide? Because all the trucks will be coming in.
Well, they're already coming there, that's the problem.
Now it's the best thing, you know?
They're damaging our berm, and that one house there, that has, he has a well in his front yard, so when the berm gets damaged, all the water goes in his front yard, and we hear about it.
I don't know, what do we, I mean, I leave it, really, I leave it to you to bring us what you think should be the next project. But this one here, you're asking us if we think it should be.
I'm pushing something forward that's being pushed at me, basically. People are calling me about this in a very, not very, there's a couple that are very upset about it.
I'd like to do something, but I'd like to...
Not spend $80,000, $70,000.
Well, I'd like to, if it's 80,000, but it makes the road bigger and it does some other stuff.
I'm gonna meet with MVP group next week on the 20th, so why don't I push it to them and see if this is something possibly we could get through that grant? Because it isn't, it is one of those situations where we get heavy rain, it floods people's houses. So there's two, actually, the one with berm, and then like Raj says, the other guy's yard floods, he's never called or complained, but I'm sure...
It's an issue.
Yeah, it's an issue.
No, and I...
And I don't know if that would qualify, but it doesn't hurt to ask. Then in another meeting in a month or so, we can talk about it again. I'll know by then, November meeting, I could bring it back.
Is that what the board wants to do at this point?
I'm fine with that.
I'll make a motion to pass over that until future date.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Malden Street, that's still on our list, Malden Street Bridge.
Yeah, actually, I have good news. Well, it's not real good news, but it's been deferred. Apparently, according to Mohammed Nabussali, Nabusi, he says that it is his understanding that the contractor is not planning to close the bridge this year. He's working on getting all of the material approvals between now and the end of the year, start construction in the spring of 2019. So that's what he's saying right now.
It's the update, we're not, nothing's happening.
Sounds like nothing's gonna happen. They couldn't get all their approvals done for the season, so they're gonna hold it off till next year, so...
Related in something that Raj was talking about, the trucks and everything, because that's where they're coming from, the Holden. Do we have the capability of having something that says only certain size trucks are coming over there? Would that be something?
The state kind of runs that. We can restrict it, we can, we can do studies on it, and we can do traffic studies, and if they find that there's more trucks coming on that road than cars, I guess it is, then we can, we can do something with it. Because we have the same problem on Laurel Street and Good Dale and Prospect, I mean, they're all heavily traveled from, traffic coming from Holden and Worcester.
Right.
So, but it's something we'd have to go to the CMRBC and get some traffic counts, and no one's ever really complained about that street, except for the, I have, because of the berm. Laurel Street, we get a lot of complaints.
Mr. Chairman? Typically, Mass DOT won't limit trucks on a route unless there's some reason, some structural reason for limiting, such as a bridge or a culvert that can't, you know, handle a weight over a certain amount.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And the big, I think, the biggest issue with that is, when we're restricted somewhere, we better, we better know where it's gonna go before it makes some other area that worse. So that's, I think that's the biggest issue with restricting in certain places. Okay, any other concerns or questions for DPW? Nope? Thanks very much.
Thank you, Butch.
Okay. Consider placing non-zoning articles on the October 15th warrant related to adult-use marijuana. A, article to ban. B, article to establish a sales tax. So this is from the committee that was put together to put the zoning, zoning bylaw together, which I think is moved to the planning board at this point. So we need to do, we didn't need to do anything at this meeting to refer it to them.
No, you already voted as a, as a Board of Selectmen to authorize the study committee to refer it to the planning board on your behalf.
It's in front of the planning board.
That's been done.
So the planning board had discussion about putting the article to ban first, and if that passes, and then, then the tax article can be somewhere too, unless you want to ask...
So the study committee had asked whether or not the Board of Selectmen was giving any consideration to establishing a total ban article. I think we, before we established the subcommittee, there had been some discussion amongst you all about, you know, should we also, you know, have consideration about having an article to ban? We'd had some feedback from some residents saying it would be good to have a couple of choices on the warrant. So the study committee felt that it wasn't under their purview to talk about an article to ban, so they wanted it to come back to you as the Board of Selectmen to decide whether or not you want to put a, an article on the October 15th town meeting warrant along with the zoning bylaw that would regulate adult use. But this one would be to ban it, so it would give voters a choice. And this wouldn't be done as a zoning article, this would be done as a general bylaw article.
Right, because I think that people can look at it differently. At the last meeting, residents said, I don't, I don't know if all the residents that spoke were against the ban, they wanted more information on it. And now with the zoning information I think we have, we can answer questions that they could have for us. So that's why we were gonna re-add this to the, add this again to the article, I mean, to the town meeting.
I'm against adding an article to ban. I think the town, it was brought before the town, the town voted it down. Yes, some people wanted more, more information on it, but overall, the sense I got was that people were not for banning it, so that's, that's my take on that one.
Yeah, but all we are saying is, you know, we are not saying, you know, we are banning, we are giving a choice. So, you know, a lot of towns said, you know, total ban, ban of everything. And some of the towns said ban of only the stores. Some towns says ban of testing facilities, some towns says ban of growers.
I understand the issue, I'm just telling you, I think this town already...
So what I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, for the people, I think nothing wrong in giving them a choice, do you want to ban it? If they say no, that's fine. Do you want to ban the stores? Fine. If not, you know, we can, you know, if they say, yes, we do want the stores, we do want this thing, then we can move along with the bylaw. So we are not saying, I totally agree.
I understand what you're saying completely, but I'm telling you, my personal opinion is, no matter what is discussed here tonight, I will not vote in favor of putting an article to ban the medical, to ban recreational use of marijuana on this board. I'm one of five. And we can discuss it as much as we want, I will not vote.
Just to add it to the, add it to the town meeting, so the residents in town can vote.
I believe the residents in town already voted on it, and the answer was they don't want to ban.
And I think one of the questions that were asked that night is, you know, the town voted. This town did vote not to pass the adult-use marijuana, you know, when it, when it was on the ballot box. And that was asked, and we didn't have the answers that night. And that's why I think a lot of people were concerned that they wanted more information. So let's, so any more discussion, or? I mean, this, this would be the, I think it would be kind of in, the ban would be first, the bylaw would be next, and then the establish a sales tax would be after that.
That would make the most sense in terms of order of articles.
Mr. Ruchel?
Yep?
I think we're confusing the public by doing this again. So I feel like with Mr. Crowley, they have voted one way, so now it's like, we don't like that vote, so we're gonna bring it back and do it again. So I totally disagree with putting it back and putting it on there, and I think then we're gonna have more, more questions and more confusion by having those options out there. So I totally agree with Mr. Crowley.
And then the other issue that we've seen, the committee, after we looked at all bylaws from other towns, we noticed a lot of towns do it this way, and that's why we brought it to the Board of Selectmen.
I think, you know, if I have to say something, there is nothing wrong, I think last town meeting, when the town voted not to ban, some of the residents did complain, the language of that warrant article was not clear. So I did, they were thinking that the opposite of whatever they voted. the opposite of whatever they voted. So, I think, you know, we should, in, in fairness for some of them, you know, if they want to ban it, we should give them a chance. So, I'm favoring putting an article on the ban. But I'm, I'm not far or against all of these things, you know, but just give the fairness for the public. There is nothing wrong in putting an article, simple article on that.
Do you have comments, sir?
Can I say something? So, I, I agree with Mr. Rajesh Kumar. I don't think there was a question, at least from my perspective, and I've been coming to the meetings, that that question was presented to the residents. So, I would like to see that question come up, whether we want to ban it or not. And nothing is wrong, we've given, given the residents the option. I don't know why there's such an objection.
I'm gonna say I disagree with that statement. This was presented at, at the last town meeting to put a ban on recreational marijuana use. And a vote was taken, and the vote was no, we do not want to ban it. This, we, we, as a town, at town meeting, we voted on this already.
I was at that town meeting, and I agree again with Raj Kumar, that question, to me at least, was not what you're saying now. That was not what I understood it to be.
And I, and I would just add to that, I think that we weren't prepared. We put it on the ballot, and we put it on the warrant, and we weren't prepared, prepared to answer questions on it. I mean, people were concerned, does this mean you're banning it, that we can't smoke it in our backyard, or we can't smoke it? No, it's just, we have to make sure it's clear that it's for retail and all other uses. But...
That's, that's one of the misconceptions that time it happened is, when you say ban, it's a ban of, I mean, ban to smoke in this town. That's what, one of those things happened. Anyway, I do, can I make a motion? I'd like to make a motion to include a wa- warrant article for the October 15th town meeting to place a article to ban the recre- adult use marijuana. And also to add the article to establish.
Well, let's just do one at a time. We'll do the article for that. So, do I hear a second? Okay. Any other discussion? The only thing I'd say for other discussion, I know sometimes we put things on the articles that we don't, that we should be on and shouldn't be on, but I think when this was, this is a question, I'd like to put it back to the residents in town. At least the residents that come to town meeting. And they will come that night, because we have the, I think the, the very, I mean, the, the bylaw we have is very good, but I think we should give them both options. That's, that's my only thought. So, okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. So, it passes, we'll, we'll word up the article. I'm sure it's, we have, town council has us, has the wording for it.
We have several language already to go through.
So, again, the next, the next article would be to, an article to establish the sales tax.
I'll make a motion to establish the sales tax at the highest applicable rate allowed.
A second.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recognize the acceptance of following donations of the, for the ban stand committee to, and to approve expenditures of these funds for general purposes. $134 in free will donations from August 19th concert, 2008, 20831 in free will donations from August 26 concert.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is review bids for surplus equipment and vote to accept or reject. So, we have the list here, so surplus, this was the, so I guess the first thing we have is two full-size light bars for $100.
Correct.
So, our option is to...
Accept or reject.
Does anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a suggestion that we go through the list of, of all of them and ask for, somebody put a hold if they want to discuss it. If they don't want to discuss it, we can just go, rather than, you know what I mean?
I was just gonna go through the 25, oh, I see, there's a lot, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so looking at the whole list, you're saying?
Right, if we just look the whole list, if somebody has an issue with any one item, just say hold, and then we can go back and revisit it, and, you know, vote on the, vote on the 95% type thing. Does that work?
Yeah, do you?
For example, if I had an issue with the...
Yeah, that's fine, I have no problem with that, yeah. I mean, Anita, do you want to go, go through all the ones, all the ones? You don't have to do the ones that, no bids, I don't think.
No, I'll just do the ones that, and I'll just give the highest bidding amount. Okay. So, we have two full-size light bars for the fire department at $100. We have a set of couplings, hoses, and nozzles for $25. We have another set of assorted nozzles for $25. We have a forest fire pump can metal for $7. We have a chimney fire can for $1.
Why don't we just, since that's under fire department, why don't we just vote on that? Does anybody have any questions with that? If not, do I hear a motion?
Make motion, approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then the next section would be...
Continuing on, the next section is tools.
Tools, yeah.
So, we have ground monitor, we have the, there's two, and we have two bids. One is for $50, one is for $175. So, we took the two highest bids. We also have chainsaw boxes.
No, I think that's... Chainsaw looks like it's $175. Then there's two...
Excuse me, excuse me, you're correct. So, the, the ground monitor, two, is $50. The chainsaw is $175.
So, how did, how did?
First bidder.
He was the first bidder, is that what it was?
First one to submit.
Submit, okay. And then next, the chainsaw for $175.
$175. Then we have chainsaw box at $35. We have assorted hand tools at $23. We have assorted ropes at $25. And we have stoke stretcher for $5.
Any, any discussion on that, or do I hear a motion?
Make motion, approve.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next section will be miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous, we have a master box indicator at $25. We have a mini-ray 2000 meter at $100. We have a basic toolbox at $32. And we have a Santa for $10.
Selling a Santa? Jesus.
Make a motion, approve.
Motion, approve. Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nothing under town hall, then Mount Vernon Cemetery.
Next one, Jesus.
Under the Mount Vernon Cemetery, we have a leaf vacuum trailer and motor, which has not run in two years. And the winning bid on that was $106. We have a Billy Gold goat, I believe it is, leaf vacuum at $40. And we have two walk-behind air rigs at $27.
Do I hear a motion?
Make motion, approve.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, DPW?
And then DPW, we have the 2006 Ford F-350, and that was $1,889.91. And we have a 1993 ALM vehicle lift at $300.
Clear motion.
So, second.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just like to thank Nancy for coordinating all of that process with the departments.
Great. That was probably the most action we've had on a surplus auction for a while. Yeah.
Can I ask you a question on the surplus? Wasn't there a lawnmower, a ride-on mower?
There's some stuff that had no bids.
Oh, is that right?
And some of them had a, I think the lawnmower had a, a reserve bid, a $5,000 reserve.
There are lots of, okay. So, consider signing, I guess this is agreement to allow construction within the easement area for the Girl Scouts of Central and Western Massachusetts. It's one Century Drive, Worcester and West Boylston. Oh, I'm sorry, I would've called you early if I known that's what you're here for.
Oh, that's okay.
So, Anita, if you could just give us the...
Sure. So, the, the Girl Scouts, as you know, are, are building on a lot over on Century Drive. And they are in the process of getting ready to put in, you know, constructing foundation, et cetera. And they realized that the actual construction would impede into a drainage easement area by a very small amount. And this is an easement that we hold basically for the maintenance of the drainage system. And because we hold that easement, we have to give them permission to actually impede into that area for the purpose of constructing their building. So, the attorney for the property owner has put together this agreement, which basically, and has been reviewed by Copelman and Page. And this agreement basically says that we will be sharing this very small area for the purpose of allowing them to do the construction that they need to do, and still allows us to go ahead and get the necessary drainage work done. It's such a very small amount of, it's about five square feet of space or less. It's a triangle that's roughly three feet by three feet by three feet. And it obviously would not impact the town's ability to manage the drainage area there. So, they're asking, as appropriate, that the board of selectmen approve this agreement.
Anybody have any questions, or can I?
You were before the planning board, right?
Yes.
So, that time, I, if I remember correctly, you know, I thought you were keeping the, your line a little less. Is that right?
Yeah, it was, this easement has been a little confusing. It hasn't really been talked about. We've gone more than a year in the permitting processes. But we had proposed a different easement line, and somehow that was not recorded in the A and R. That was recorded on the lot, so it's showing the permanent easement line. So, our architect this afternoon, we found this out last Thursday when the surveyor was laying, laying out the building. And he said, oh, my goodness, there's, it, it turns out to be about 14.6 square inches of the corner of the building crosses over that easement. And then there's an overhang that gets about three feet over. So, he said, you know, all work needs to stop. So, last Thursday, we stopped. And, yeah, so we talked about, so this easement line, whatever happened on the A and R, it's still the same easement line.
Yeah, but you didn't go back to the planning board after that?
After what?
After the A and R. Did he go back to the planning?
No, because the, the owner created the lot with the A and R.
I mean, that's certainly a minor change. You wouldn't need to go back in front of planning board for that. I would make a motion to approve the easement change.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Do we have that in here?
Yes, the, the original copy's in there for signature.
Is it for the whole board, or?
It's the whole board, I believe.
There are spots for the whole.
Good luck with going forward in your building. Good luck with going forward with the building.
Thank you.
It's been a process.
It has been a process.
You've been here a few times too, so.
Yes, but we're very excited to have it started and to finish it before the snow flies. Get that.
Okay, so, you'll get this to her after the...
Yes, once everything's been notarized, we'll be good, and we'll get that.
All set.
Good luck, thank you.
Thank you. To, to Deb?
Um, it's probably to me. Do you need my card or address?
If you have a card, that's wonderful. You're welcome. We didn't want to cause any additional delays.
Okay, so that's done. Next item would be...
I'll be in touch tomorrow.
This is a review of new and updated financial policy in preparation for a public hearing in October. Anita, do you?
Sure. So, in your packet, you have the, the set of the proposed financial policies. And I had mentioned this to you before, and actually, it was one of the goals for, for me to work on with my finance team in FY18, was to look to see what we need to do to update our financial policies and procedures. And basically, we had proposed this goal because we, you know, we do have some, some financial policies and procedures that hadn't been in place. There's currently nine on the books, so to speak. But with the Municipal Modernization Act, a lot of the statutory changes there affect financial policies. And we, as a team, wanted to make sure that we were reviewing our community's policies to make sure that they were in line with the changes that have been made by the state. So, what we did was we started reviewing those policies, and then we became aware that DOR, the Department of Revenue, had a, a set of, of best practices, sample policies for communities to use. So, we took those drafts and applied them and put in specific details that are, are unique to West Boylston, and came up with this set of 12 policies that we're asking you to consider and add. And in terms of the existing policies, I'll just do a quick oversight in terms of what's changing. For the existing policy, that's the reserve fund, we're leaving that as-is with no changes. So, that's nothing that needs to be considered. For the intra-departmental transfers, that's left as-is. For the spending in excess of appropriation, that's being left as-is. For the investment policy, we're replacing that with the draft that you have in your packet. For the investment policy, excuse me, the new growth taxation revenue policy, there is a slightly updated draft in your packet. For the fund balance policy, we've replaced that with the financial reserves policy that you have. For cash receipts, cash dispersments, petty cash tailings, and reconciliation of cash policy, we have taken that and broken them out into separate policies that are more user-friendly. And then for post-issuance tax compliance and other tax obligations, we have left that as-is. So, what you're seeing here in this is a group of some adjustments to existing policies, and there's a new policy such as capital planning and anti-fraud that have been added based on best practice language we've received from the state. These policies were sent to the finance committee for their review, and there were only five of them that they felt that were really under their purview. And they did make some edits and comments, and we've included their comments and edits in these drafts. And so, the next step now is for you as a board to look at these policies. So, I'm presenting them to you tonight, and I'm asking that we set up a time so that we can hold a hearing to more formally review them and take votes on these.
Any questions or concerns at this time? Okay.
Why don't we, do you have a timeframe in mind?
I would suggest the October 3rd meeting.
And if we have any comments, send them to...
Just send them back, yep, to me, yep.
The next is discuss naming committee. I guess, I, I asked about this. I don't, I don't remember really why. I think, I think one of the reasons why it was a committee that we hardly ever use, and I don't even know if there's really, there was a need for it at one time that we, that we set this up. I mean, looking at who's on the committee, we need to, there's really only three people on the committee now, because there's, there'll be two vacancies at this time. So, I don't know how we take that person off that's no longer in town. So, I don't know, does anybody have any, I'm not...
The thing is, you know, if you dismantle it, then if you want to put it back, then it's a pain. So, the committee, you know, I, I was on the committee for a while, two, three years now, so, never met. I don't know who is the chairman, and I don't know who are the other members. So, like this committee, naming committee, there are other committees not functioning, often are never met. So, are we going to take out all the committees which is not functioning? Or, I don't know.
I, I personally did, yeah. I mean, I, I think we should, if they're not, if they're not mandatory, then we have the committee.
What if, if there is a place, and if there is a requirement for a naming, then you want to go establish a naming committee, and then, you know, go to the public hearing, all those things, right?
We started this naming committee for one reason many years ago, 2009, I believe, 2008. And I'm not sure if they, I think only one time we actually asked them to look at something. But, I mean, since then, things have been, I think things have been named, and it really hasn't gone to this committee. I, I don't know exactly what goes, what goes to the committee, what doesn't go to the committee. If, if there's a bench at the park that needs to be named, do you bring it to the committee? If the senior senator now is gonna name some benches, do they all have to go to the committee? I, I just don't think, I think each, each department in regards, unless it's a town issue, can come in front of us. But I don't recall, I recall only once this coming forward, and I'm not sure if we ever settled what came forward years ago. But we brought it forward for one reason.
What's last thing that's been named?
No, I think, the last thing I can remember is the basketball court. But was it ever given a name?
Townsend.
No, that's the baseball field.
Library at the middle school, at the grade school, was named after Anne Marie.
That was, that wasn't...
Wasn't that held in the school?
That wasn't brought in front of this committee. I think the basketball court was the only thing. Was it ever named, though? That's the one thing that they came forward to us.
No, there, there was a request from...
A group.
The O'Connor family.
The flag polls.
Yes. But we also did the Cranston flag poll.
And it never went.
I believe that went to the building. Did that go to the building?
Never, never went to the naming committee, I don't believe.
I would have to look. They filed, they give me a town report, so I would have to look back at the town reports.
Yeah, that, I don't believe that one ever came. But, yeah, I, you know...
It doesn't cover the school. The school, we offered our policy to the school in case they wanted to adopt something similar, but I don't know what they did.
The thing is, you know, we are not spending any money, or we are not paying money for the members.
I don't disagree.
So, there is, there is a committee sitting there, and it's an established committee.
I don't know what...
We have to get rid of the committee. And then, you know, if there is some need, we have to go back and do all those things.
What goes to it? I mean, I, I don't think there's any policy that says it can't come in front of the board, or it can't go to the senior center, or it can't go to different groups.
It actually does state in the, in this naming committee document, under, under the policy section of it, it says that the board of selectmen is responsible for naming or renaming any facilities locating on parcels of land under the board's jurisdiction. located on parcels of land under the board's jurisdiction.
That's, that's everything.
So, what's the, what's the naming committee?
It would be short of schools, would not be under your jurisdiction.
So, what would be the purpose of naming committee?
We have the right to send it to them to review it.
To me, it seems as though what this was intended was that this naming committee would develop the rec-
Recommendation.
Develop the recommendations.
Well, if in 10 years, the committee's never done anything, and they're gonna, and this committee is to vet recommendations to us, I think we, it's not like we're, they're overwhelmed with requests for naming.
Right, but are we locking ourselves to every, is it automat, it has to go in front of this committee under the?
Is it a policy?
No.
This is just a document for the naming committee.
Right, but is it a policy that it has to go in front of them?
If it doesn't, then, then I, if it really doesn't, then I say, why do we have the committee? Because we can pick and choose?
Right.
This, this document states that there was a policy on the naming town-owned property, and that policy, it was adopted by the Board of Selectmen in 2009. So, that policy says that it's the Board of Selectmen who's responsible for naming any facilities located on the process of land that are under your jurisdiction. The Board of Selectmen is also responsible for the approval of placement of memorial objects, artwork, signs, or other fixtures on land under your jurisdiction. So, examples of that would be plaques, memorial, ornamental signs, sculptures, et cetera, benches. So, if it's a case of a, a written proposal for co-memorization of a veteran, then the committee would forward a copy of the request to the Director of Veteran Services for consideration.
Chris, I have to agree with you. What's the purpose? It seems like when it was established, maybe there was things going on and a lot of requests were coming in. But at this point in time, I would say disband it.
Well, under, under what Anita just said, nothing says it goes to the committee, but then it says within 60 days of receiving documentation. This is under the number three. To the director, he or she shall make the recommendation to the naming committee as to the naming of the memorial square in honor of the veteran.
Specific to the veteran's situation.
So, all those other things. Is there something down there?
Read that. That's what they do.
So, under name, naming and structures?
Chris, do you think it came when the benches were going in?
No, it came when there was an issue with the park.
Oh, okay.
I don't, I don't know. Again, I, that's, that's the only thing. I mean, whatever, I mean, we, we would have to put it on a public, to cancel this policy, would we need to? Of this committee?
I don't think the policy needs to be canceled. It's the naming committee which seems to be, you know, up for discussion. Do you feel you need that naming committee to vet any proposals that are being put forward for, you know, assigning a name to a building, or to a room, or to a, a bench? I mean, to the points that have been made, it's not happening as frequently as apparently it did in the past. Do you feel that you, as a board, can handle whatever might come forward at this point? Or do you think it makes sense to keep this committee on board so that if something does come forward, and you, you know, you feel like a naming committee might have better opportunity for seeking that public feedback, um, to develop recommendations? If you feel like that's appropriate, then I would say, I would make a recommendation to you all that you leave this committee in place and only use it on an as-needed basis.
And there's only two members of the committee, because membership and qualifications, no elected officials will be allowed to serve in this committee. So Raj can't be on this committee.
I know that.
So, there's only two members on the committee?
Yeah, I'm just saying, so now there's only two.
But the problem is, you know, so, there is a committee, this committee is established for some purpose. So, we are not, as a town, as a Board of Selectmen, we are not paying not even a penny for this committee to exist. And just because this committee is there, so there is, if we could, you know, in the near future, if somebody requested, oh, I want a naming, this way or that way, then we could refer it to the naming committee. If not, the Board of Selectmen has to take it.
We'll into the scenarios.
Yeah.
But we only have two members, so we couldn't refer it to them now anyway. We'd need to get more members.
We have not had anyone, I mean, I, granted, there's been no interest in the committee, probably because there's been no activity.
Yeah, but at the same time, you know, you have many, many boards and committees. There are, there are vacancies.
The only other committee that I know of that's inactive is the Cable Advisory Committee, which only convenes as necessary when we're negotiating licenses.
I can't think of many committees that, I can't, I mean, I could look through the list. I can't think of many committees that don't meet. Sure, they might meet once a year.
No, I'm saying vacancy in the committees.
No, but I'm saying as far as.
This committee never met. I agree with you. Yeah. Never met.
No, it has, it has met. It has met since I've been on the board, but it was put together for one certain issue, but whatever, I, I, whatever the committee, whatever the board wants to do is.
What's the process to eliminate a committee?
The board would just vote to, to disband the committee.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second. I guess we can always keep it on file. If it becomes an issue someday, we can say, since we only have two members, we need to, we need to get members anyway, so. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay. So, are we going to pass over the next?
Yes.
Item? Yeah. Hope is this vote to approve and sign police union contract.
Yep, so we, we have, um, we have worked out all the kinks in the language with the Police Department Union. They agreed to the document that's there. Um, there's three originals there for the board to sign, so I would ask that the board vote to approve and sign the police contract.
Have a motion and a?
A second.
Second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Beautiful. Discuss. Discuss if the board wishes to pursue the blight bylaw under the continued town beautification goal. I didn't, I, I didn't, did we think of not?
Well, me and John are tasked with that, and frankly, we haven't done it. So, we, we need to, we, I think the answer is, I personally do want to pursue that, but we need to reinvigorate and get back with the Board of Health and make it happen. It needs to happen.
That's a big problem.
Yeah.
That's a real problem.
That house around the corner from me? Blue one?
Yeah. I'm gonna paint it, so.
Anita, just, um, Spencer just passed one, so maybe we can look at what they did.
Okay.
Um, it's a pretty good one, so we can look at that and then.
So, in regards to the, uh, the, we, we, we want to keep it moving forward and put it together with the, keep it with the beautification goal.
I don't want to be doing anything but October, I guess.
I don't. Yep. Unless back. Okay, uh, Town Administrators Report. Anita?
Okay.
First, uh, whatever order you want to go with.
All right, I'll start with the current issues. So, just wanted to bring back to the board a report of, um, the meeting that Chris Ruccio and I attended on April 22nd in the town of Berlin. It was a meeting of the Berlin and the Boylston Select Boards. Um, basically, it was their first discussion about this concept of regionalizing public safety services. Um, it was an interesting discussion. Um, I, I, you know, I, I think that there was definite concern on, on both sides. But what happened was there was no discussion made about the feasibility of working with CMRPC in a study at this point. But both boards did agree to take the issue back to their respective towns and try to gather, um, some public feedback on the concept of it, and to really determine if it's worth some serious consideration. To work with CMRPC on doing a study, it appeared that it was going to cost, um, a $20,000, of which $10,000 would be provided by some grant funds. So, it, you know, it is an investment that the towns would need to make, and it, you know, particularly on the Boylston side, it, you know, there seemed to be, um, some reluctance to move ahead with that until there was much more serious discussion with the public regarding the, um, the suitability of that. So, I just, you know, wanted to let the board know that that's happened. I think it's important for us to stay informed in terms of what happens with their deliberations. Um, if for nothing else than the fact that if they do make any structural changes between those two towns, it could impact us in terms of our reliance on them for mutual aid activities. So, um, if anything comes up on that, I will keep the board updated on it.
The only thing I'd add to that, and I, I think we weren't recognized at the meeting, we weren't invited to speak, we weren't invited to be part of this committee. We kind of sat and watched. I thought the dollar was $40,000, but maybe it's 20. I thought they talked about 20 and 20, but.
I can confirm that, but that's neither here nor there.
I think the group that was, the group that was pushing to go forward was the group that's going to get the 20 or $40,000 to do the, to do the, um, review. Um, I don't think there was much issue at all, I mean, interest at all. I think, in regards to the, some of the fire department side issues, I, I think we should let the chief come forward to us if he feels we need to. We already mutually aid in, mutually aid in fire departments anyway. We're constantly going over there. And with Boylston, I'm not sure if we do much with Berlin. And their concern was, Boylston and Berlin said, we are so far apart and so far away from each other, it would be crazy for us to merge, so. I mean, if Anita, I guess if Anita thinks going to this is important, I, I don't, I didn't see anything that came out of it. That they, they're gonna, they're gonna argue about it and fight about it. We weren't asked to give our comments. I would ask, we asked Chief Walsh to come forward to us if there's somebody he wants to lock, lock into some type of agreement. Maybe with Boylston. I think it was said a few times that it would be more logical for us to talk with Wes Boylston about this issue, because we're closer to them and we do so many things.
And it would seem like we're more geographically suited. But in terms of on the fire side, the, the chiefs have monthly meetings anyways, and there is ongoing discussion on the fire side in terms of looking at ALS ambulance services. Because it's an ongoing concern with small communities in terms of how do you maintain an active and effective ALS service? So, that is something that the chief and his staff will continue to have conversations with about. And, you know, if anything comes of that, he definitely would be bringing something back to us for, for discussion.
Yeah, because since this meeting was, that we were, I guess, maybe there was something in the item of the newspaper about it, because people have called me, and I haven't had a chance to call some people back, but, and I've talked to the fire chief about it, so I think the fire chief needs to look at issues. I think sooner or later, some of this stuff has to merge. It's just, it's just going to cost too much money as years go forward, so. Um, I'm not sure if this is the route to go, but, uh, we can let the chief maybe look into it and bring some information back to us as needed. Thank you.
Okay. On grants update, um, we did receive notice from DEP that we, um, are receiving another grant of $7,200 from their Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. That's used for a variety of different things, which includes educational programs, recycling containers. We can even use it to help, um, fund our share of recycling center assessment costs. We also received a, a grant, a MIAF flex grant in the amount of $7,700, and those funds will be used to purchase two, um, AED units for the fire department along with supplies, and we'll be purchasing two dehumidifiers for the library. So, um, those are two new, two good new, um, grants that we've received, and the first formal quarterly grant report for all the FY19 grant activity will be presented at our October 3rd meeting. In terms of other new initiatives, um, we have our first issue of the West Boylston Municipal Bulletin has been published. There's copies on the side table there. It's on the website, and we'll be distributing it out amongst our town buildings. And, you know, at this point, it's, it's a small issue, um, but I'm hoping it will grow. I'm looking for feedback from people in terms of the type of content they'd like to see in it, and the formatting of content that they'd like to see in that. So, I'm hoping that we can use it as an additional tool for communication with our residents. I do have to say that, um, it must have been roughly 45 minutes after it was posted on the website, I had a resident call me about the committee highlight, about the Transportation Committee, and she wanted to know more about the committee. And so, obviously, it's working to some degree already, so I'm hoping that we continue to get that kind of positive feedback.
Yeah, I figured, the only, the only thing I'd say is, is there a way to put it on the website so people can go to the website and read it without downloading it?
It's a, it's a link. You can open up the link. You don't have to download it.
I believe the link sends you right to the download. At least that's the way it was when I tried it today.
I didn't have to download it when I tested it. It opened right up.
That's fine, then.
But if anyone has any problems, let me know, because I can work with, um, Virtual Town Hall on that. And then the only other update is, um, on the national opioid litigation. Um, so, you know, we have, um, since you all agreed to be part of that, um, we've received several different documents, and we've had to supply some information to KP Law, who is the, uh, one of the municipal, um, legal entities working with the national team on this. So, we've supplied some information to the types of files that we have, um, that might relate to this. Now, they're asking us to put together a more formal fact sheet, which is answering some specific questions. So, we've got to get that back to them. Um, I'll be working with, you know, the police chief and the fire chief on that. But I also would, wanted the board to authorize the chair to work with us as needed to finalize any other documents that might need to come out as a result of this fact sheet. There might be a signature. Um, and I would feel far better if it was that, you know, the chair was, had oversight in helping us put that together.
Hello, make the motion.
Motion.
Second.
A second and a discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
So, just to let you know, I'm on the website now. I click it, and all it does is send you to a page to download it.
Oh, interesting.
I mean, you know, if, that's it. It just sends you to the PDF and it tells people to download. I think you might get a little more people viewing it if, because some people are, oh, this is it, this is the newsletter, I gotta download it to read it. Maybe if it's on the page, they can read it, and then if they want to download it onto their computer.
Yep, no, that's, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that, because when I tested it today, it opened right up for me. Um, so I'm not sure.
Oh, it opened up to the, to the PDF?
To the PDF.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this.
But I'll talk to Virtual Town Hall.
They should download. Okay.
Thank you. And that's it for the Town Administrator's Report.
Any other, any questions or anything to the Town Administrator?
Did you, you skipped number four.
Oh, did I? I'm sorry. Oh, the volunteer, and how could I do that? I'm sorry. This is important, because I do want to take opportunity in Town Administrative Reports to, you know, spotlight various different staff or volunteers that are helping out. And in this report, I wanted to thank residents Norma Chanis and Rachel Pacaya for the work that they've been doing in helping to get this October 13th townwide cleanup underway. Um, Rachel has been great in getting that special webpage online, which will be updated weekly as we get more details about the upcoming October 13th event. And Norma has been a great help in, um, putting together a process so that we'll be seeking, um, business volunteers and sponsors, as well as groups such as our Solid Waste Advisory Team, Watches at Earth Day, and other, other teams to volunteer at the cleanup, but also, equally important, to put together some informational booths that'll be here at Town Hall during the day, and most particularly during that noon to 2:00 PM, where we're inviting all volunteers to come back and get some refreshments at Town Hall. So, I really want to thank the two of them for helping with this, because it's, um, it's, it, it takes a team to really put it together to make it a successful event.
Okay, any other questions or concerns? Just, uh, in regards to the grant updates, were there any grants that we applied for that we didn't get? Are you, you're going to stop putting those in if?
That'll all be in the quarterly report.
Okay. Facilities Committee update, um, RAC Change Order Number Three. Is there a dollar amount to this?
Yes, so Change Order Number Three is in the, um, amount of $23,354.
I thought it was less than that, with the, minus the $1,500, something like that, for the sign? 21 something.
21964 on, on page one.
Yes, you're right. 21964.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the next one just says invoices. Are there any?
There were none. We just put it in there as placeholder in case we had some. The rest, the invoices will be addressed at the September 12th this meeting.
General Project Update.
Building's weather tight. Uh, there, there are continuing site work, uh, doing the drainage, and, um, it's coming along good. It's really good.
Okay, next is concurrence on the appointment of Edward Ramstrom to the Historical Commission Effective September 7, 2018, for a term to expire on April 30, 2021. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item is the occurrence on the appointment of James Miola to the Position of Constable Effective. effective September 7, 2018, for a term to expire on April 30, 2019, at a rate of 13.25 an hour. So, have a motion and a-
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
What are the duties of a Constable?
Excuse me?
What are the duties of a Constable?
Basically, for, for this position, it's just helping with the elections.
How many Constables we have now?
We have one other election Constable, and then we use our police officers. So this was actually recommended by Chief Minnick to add this individual as a Constable, so that when, as needed, he would use this individual in lieu of having to place officers at the elections.
So do we pay more money for the police officers?
We do. We, we pay them the hourly rate.
Three times.
Three times.
Well, I think, sometimes it's just part of their shift where they could be, they could do something.
Correct, but I mean, they're, they're hourly paid as much higher than-
They're working, they're working on their hourly wage. So I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is the concerns on the appointment of Ray Pecall to the Municipal Building Committee as the Finance Committee Liaison effective September 7, 2018, for a term to expire April 20, 2020.
Show move.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I, I only have two of the appointments certificates. I have Mr. Miola and Mr. Ramstrom. I don't have that third one in the signature file.
We'll look at that for you.
Unless I get mixed with something else, but, I'll look. Okay, next, meetings, invitation and announcements. I guess the only thing I'll re, talk about again will be the townwide, West Boylston Townwide Cleanup Day, Keeping Our Town Beautiful, Saturday, October 13th at 9:00 a.m. to noon. So if people want to get involved and be team, neighborhood leaders and things, they can contact the Town Administrator. We'll have supplies and things like that for you, and it should be a nice day. Hopefully, and the rain date would be the 20th. So it's, it's April 13th from 9:00 a.m. to noon on Saturday. Any questions, or you want to get involved? You can, I'm sure it's on the town's website.
You can go to the town website and put in your contact information there, or you can just send me an email, or give me a call. I, we, I just have to say that, that people really have been stepping up, and I've been getting a lot of people expressing interest and be willing to volunteer. So I thank everyone, and I think it's going to be a fun day.
Okay, and next-
Mr. Chairman, I do have one other announcement. We do have the Affordable Housing Workshop that's going to be held on Thursday, September 20th at 7:00 p.m., and that's looking for public feedback on the updating of the Housing Production Plan. So I want to remind people that that's coming up as well.
What is that again?
That is the Affordable Housing Workshop on September 20th at 7:00 p.m.
What is Housing Production?
The Housing Production Plan is a document we have to update every five years. It identifies the housing types and needs that we have in our community. Ends up being an important document in the master plan and our comprehensive plan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and I just, I guess under the next section, I went to a meeting for village zoning. If, when they, I don't know if another meeting's been set. I think it has.
Yeah, please.
I just, I don't know myself.
I saw something about a workshop on October 1st.
There is going to be, yes. There will be another meeting. So, the same person from CMRPC.
So it's October, it's October 1st at 7:00 p.m. will probably be in this room. If, if they haven't booked the Nance team, and they get this room, we, there were a lot of people last time. So it's a Monday night, so I don't think it should be, shouldn't be a real problem. So it's at seven o'clock, it's another, I guess it's another workshop on village zoning. It was interesting. I think there were a lot of good comments, there were a lot of people there. So if anybody, if you can make it that night, I think it'd be, even if any of the board members want to come in and see what it's like. So that's October 1st at 7:00 p.m. Next, future agenda items, Selectments Reports. Anybody?
Now, we discussed this earlier. If you travel into Worcester, starting on Monday, if you don't take that every day, 190 South is going to be closed, the Exit 4 is going to be closed from September 10th till October 15th, so you have to make other arrangements. There's a bunch of different ways to get there, but it's, right now, the sign is after you've taken the turn to get onto the exit. So if you're not traveling it every day, you might not know that.
Okay, any other? Hearing none, do I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, thank you.